Bind open meeting for Wednesday, March 21st. I will call into session the Northborough School Committee and I will have the other school committee chairs call their committees into session.
I will call the Regional School Committee into session.
I will tell the Southborough School Committee.
Audience members who wish to speak, please keep their comments, their sharing to five minutes or less. And I think that's being very generous.
We usually do too.
And please.
Algonquin, and each day was misery for him and our family. Left to his natural sleep cycle, my son would sleep from around 11:30 PM to around 8:30 AM, giving him nine hours of sleep, which is normal for this age group. But to be on time for school, he had to get up at 6:10 AM so that I could drive him to school while he ate breakfast in the car. We didn't even consider having him take the bus because it arrived on our street as early as 6:25 AM, then that would have required a 5:50 AM wake time. Over the course of the first term, his sleep deprivation accumulated and his medical conditions, including depression and anxiety, became worse. The doctor appointments mounted, taking him away from class and me away from work. To try and get a little more sleep, he began taking melatonin so that he could fall asleep a little earlier, but there was only so much that we could do with this strategy, given the evening school, high school activities, and homework. Throughout his tenure at Algonquin, he subsisted on approximately six and a half hours of sleep per school night to fit himself into Algonquin's schedule. He had to take increasing amounts of medication to counter deepening depression and anxiety. His friends all participated on the robotics team and urged him to do so. He wanted to do that, but the robotics team, as many of you know, meets on Friday evenings, and by that time of the week, he was so depleted that he just couldn't force himself to do it. That was a missed opportunity for all involved. He missed 30 days of school in each of the grading periods during his two years at Algonquin. Only about a third of those days were for physical illnesses like cold or flu. The rest were for mental exhaustion and depression due to sleep deprivation. During this high school ordeal, one of the many tests that we had conducted showed that my son is intellectually gifted. His innate talent is the only thing that allowed him to do as well academically as he did. All in all, we were lucky. We have excellent health insurance. My son's intellectual abilities carried a lot of the burden, and I used my skills as a lawyer to advocate with him, with the school, to get him the help and the resources that he needed to be successful. I really cannot imagine how families in this community without all those resources cope with depression and anxiety in their children. The Metro West Health Foundation's Adolescent Health Report Card for the years 2006 through 2014 shows a steady increase in adolescent mental health problems, including depression and attempted suicide. Studies link sleep deprivation with risk-taking behaviors such as violence, substance abuse, sexual activity, and suicide ideation and suicide attempts. Depression is a devastating condition, and I hope that neither you nor anyone that you know ever has to experience it or that you have to support someone suffering from depression. It is made worse by lack of sleep. Massachusetts mandates that children attend school through age 16. By operating this school in a way that is inconsistent with adolescent biology, the school is essentially mandating sleep deprivation and accepting lower academic performance. Each of you has a duty of care to these students. Since we began talking about this four years ago, a generation of Algonquin students will have started and this spring will graduate without anything being done. It is past time that Algonquin get in line with the recommendations of the medical community on school start time for adolescents.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Christina Iverson. I'm from Southborough, and I'm a senior at Algonquin. For the past four years, I have been getting less than the healthy amount of sleep. Because of the heavy course load that I take, I am often up extremely late at night studying or doing my homework. My homework, combined with my extracurriculars and after-school activities, leave me absolutely no time for myself to relax. If I want to watch TV or be on my phone, I have to do that during dinner. I almost always feel tired during the day. I don't drink coffee for religious reasons, and I don't think it's healthy to turn to caffeinated beverages to stay awake. If I had caffeine whenever I needed to perform well in a test and be more alert and awake, I would develop a caffeine addiction. Many of my peers need a coffee every morning just to function. I feel that because of my lack of sleep, I am at a disadvantage when compared to my peers who drink lots of coffee the next morning just to keep them awake through tests. While I understand that starting school will not necessarily mean that students will automatically get more sleep, a later start time is more closely aligned with a teenager's natural biological clock. The average teenager needs about nine hours of sleep. The last time I got nine hours of sleep on a school night was probably freshman year. After fixing the adolescent sleep epidemic, it's going to take more than just telling teenagers to put their phones down and turn off the lights. Schools and school schedules that more closely mimic a teenager's natural sleep rhythms need to be a part of the solution. Algonquin's schedule has the first bell ringing at 7:15 with class officially starting at 7:20. Only 10% of the nation's high schools starts before 7:30, according to the Huffington Post. We end school at 1:50. This schedule is completely out of sync with mine and almost all other teenagers' circadian rhythms. Biological clocks make us begin to feel tired around 11:00 PM and wake up around 8:00 AM. Because of Algonquin's schedule, we are missing out on crucial hours of sleep. Sleep deprivation can lead to many different health complications, such as increased weight gain, eating disorders, reduced immunity, depression, anxiety, and the list goes on and on. Not to mention, our ability to learn is significantly impaired when we are deprived of sleep. At Algonquin, we pride ourselves on the high quality of education that our students receive and the high caliber of students we produce. If that is what we really value, then we should be doing everything in our power to help students learn and succeed. Yet, year after year, another study on the negative impact of starting school early comes out, and yet Algonquin does nothing. Our neighboring schools from Ashland to Westborough adjust their schedules so high schoolers can sleep a few extra minutes every morning, yet Algonquin does nothing. HOSA, Algonquin's Health Occupation Student Organization, did a survey a few years ago that showed that the vast majority of students are sleep deprived, yet Algonquin does nothing. How much do we really value the mental, emotional, and physical well-being of the students if nothing ever changes? What message are we sending students if we don't put their needs first? We are up in arms, as we should be, about vaping, drugs, and alcohol, yet the health crisis of sleep deprivation also faces our school, and so far, it's been met with deafening silence. It's too late for me and my class. I truly hope, however, that you will work to find a solution for the next few classes. It's not too late for them. Thank you.
I would just like to call the Northborough/Southborough Superintendency Union Number Three into session now that you're here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'm Colin Carrigan. I'm a dual-sport athlete for Algonquin, so on top of everything else that everyone else has said, I also have to do homework and make time to do sports and homework. So first of all, I don't have anything prepared.
Excuse me, Colin. Thank you so much for coming and speaking, but I was just wondering what town you're in.
Oh, sorry. I'm from Southborough. So first of all, I don't have anything written down because just for me, the effects that not getting enough sleep has, it happens every day, and it's a constant part of my life. So being a dual-sport athlete, I often am doing homework till 10 o'clock every night, and it's a lot of work. So on nights when I can go to bed early, I'm often disciplined. I will try to go to bed early, but even if I'm in bed, it is very hard to even fall asleep before 11:30 because my body's just not used to it. Like, I have to stay up late, often for sports, and even if I get to go to bed early, that's just not how my body clock is set up. So oftentimes at school, I'm super tired. I'm pretty good about waking up early in the morning, but just I know I haven't gotten enough sleep when in fifth period, I'm falling asleep while I'm trying to take a test. And I know it's not healthy, so it's not great for me. And for sports too, like I can tell I'm tired at practice, and that affects the way I play the sports as well. So it's been difficult having to only rely on seven hours of sleep, and even though my mom tells me to go to bed early and I try my best, it's just really hard sometimes. So I hope we take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Andre Heard. I'm from Southborough. I've been going to Algonquin for two years now, and I can say that the sleep and waking up early has really affected my life. I play three sports, and I do homework, and I try to do my best to be an overall great student, but going to bed late and waking up super early isn't helping with anything. I want to succeed in life, and I want to be able to hang out with my friends, and I want to play my sports well, but I can't possibly do that with going to bed so late and waking up so early to do all these things I want to accomplish in life with all these things that I'm forced to do at school. I think we have too much on our plate, and school wants us to be functioning human beings, but it's hard to do that when we're forced to wake up super early and we're forced to go to sleep really late just to accomplish what the school wants us to. I hope you guys make a change to that because I think it's better for everyone in the future of Algonquin to become better people, and that's the whole goal of the school.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Xiaoying Zhang, and I'm from Northborough. I am a senior at Algonquin right now, and I also do think that our sleep schedule is really impacting my life and my ability to not only learn but be functioning on the weekends and during school. So first of all, I am a coffee drinker, and I find that I have kind of a dependence on coffee. I go to Dunkin's every morning, and when I don't, I find that I have a lot of trouble focusing in class, and at times, I just don't focus because I'm so zoned out and so tired that I can't. This is because I function on six or seven hours of sleep when I know that we need nine. Sometimes I wake up late because I don't have that much sleep, and then I'm late to school. On these days, I can't go to Dunkin', and I can't get my coffee, and then it spirals out of control, and I've noticed that on those days especially, I just am so out of it. And not only am I not able to focus on classwork, but I find myself zoned out when I'm talking to my friends. On weekends, we get a lot more sleep because we don't have school, and this four- or five-hour addition to our sleep is actually just making our sleep schedule worse. Because as teenagers, we need a stable sleep schedule, and when we're sleeping five to six hours on weekdays and then nine to 10 hours on weekends, it actually breeds a kind of vicious cycle where our sleep schedule just gets worse and worse. And I notice this too. On weekends, I don't drink coffee because I know that I get enough sleep and I'm in control of it, and because of this, I function better on weekends too. And I think that this observation is really important to notice because it just kind of shows that even as one person, there is a really large impact on my life because of Algonquin's sleep schedule. So I think that you guys should try your best to make a change, and even though I know that I can't really benefit from it because I am a senior, I think that it's worthwhile to spend your time on. Thank you.
Thank you. Down with audience sharing.
Hi, I'm Cara Hadden, and I'm also a senior, and I kind of just want to add to something Xia was saying about how not getting enough sleep on a daily basis can affect your sleep schedule in general. Because I'm a senior, I've kind of been going through the grind of not getting enough sleep day after day for four years, and my body has kind of become accustomed to it. So now, I'm in a place where I have a bit more free time, but I still am unable to get into a regular sleep cycle, and I think that that's something that's really bad because the way that our bodies work is that when we're deprived of sleep, we can't just get more sleep the next day and that's going to solve the problem. It's not like a refilling thing. And so when you lose as much sleep as a kid, you're causing permanent damage, and so in addition to the permanent damage you've already caused, there's the damage to the sleep cycle. And so now that I'm going to college, I fear that I will not be able to have a regular sleep schedule there. And so I think that if students had a better way that they could establish a cycle early on and kind of establish good sleeping habits as teenagers, it would help them for the rest of their lives. Thank you.
Karen, which town are you resident of?
I'm Southborough.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jen Permac. I'm a Southborough resident. I'm a clinical psychologist. I work at Brown as an assistant professor, and I also see patients clinically. I work at the VA, and I specialize in depression and suicide research. I've been doing that for about the past 10 years, and last but not least, I'm a parent. I have a seven-year-old who's in first grade. So these are kind of issues that I think about a lot as a suicide researcher and a mental health professional, and also someone as a parent of a young child, because I see what all these teens are saying, and they're absolutely correct. And even beyond just anecdotal evidence, we know as researchers, and one of the things that my colleagues and I talk about the most, psychologists and researchers don't agree on a lot. We publish papers, and then another paper will come out disagreeing with that paper. The one consistent in all of this is sleep. So we know that sleep predicts suicide. We know it predicts depression. We know it predicts anxiety, and the research is pretty solid. There are dozens, hundreds of papers on the link between sleep and suicide. And as parents, as school board members, as teachers, we can even see in the classrooms with our teenagers, if you observe them over the course of the day, the first couple of hours in the school, they're falling asleep, they're not paying attention, and that's because executive function is impacted by lack of sleep. So we know things like decision-making, whether or not they make a smart decision, whether or not they're able to concentrate, to sit still, hyperactivity, all of those things are related to sleep. And we know that, and we can do something about it. So I really do encourage you to think about those things, to think about. In the last three or four years, I've probably talked to, interviewed, or treated over 400 people who have attempted suicide. I've had to hold the hand of people, of parents, whose kids have died of suicide. I've had to have crying parents in my office because they're dealing with the impact of anxiety and depression on their child. We have an opportunity here to step in and do something about that. Other school systems in the state, my colleague Mary-Car Sgaden, who's a leading sleep expert, has actually been very involved in Sharon, for example, which just switched to a later sleep time. There are all of these things that come with it. Yes, there's bus schedules, there's budget, but I think this is important. I think the emotional well-being, the academic performance of our students. We're one of the top school systems in the state. Imagine how much greater we could be if we actually had kids performing at their best. So I think it's a really important issue. I think it's something that we really need to think about seriously, and I really encourage all of you and I thank all of the students for talking about their experience. But it's really, I feel very passionate about it, and just knowing the research, I feel very frustrated that things aren't changing because I can see the impact that this issue has on our students. Thank you.
Thank you. First, are there any other parents? Are there any other parents who are interested in sharing? I was going to try to wrap things up at the end. Anybody else who wants to make some comments before I go?
I wasn't really prepared to say something, but I feel this is important enough, and I've thought a lot about this. My name is Jill Medansky. I'm from Southborough, and I'm a parent of two kids, one that is in Algonquin and one who is worried about going to Algonquin next year. I was thinking about this topic, and I was thinking about this forum and this meeting, and I thought, if this whole get-together and meeting was about the opioid crisis, and somebody were to step forward and say, "I have a proven method of decreasing opioid use. Not only that, but it will decrease drug use overall, alcohol use, it will decrease depression and suicide. Not only that, but it will also decrease the amount of car accidents that teens are getting into. And not only that, but grades will go up." Is that something that you would be interested in doing, exploring, and enacting? Of course it is. In medicine, we look at risk-benefit, and the benefits are very clear. And the risk isn't really a risk, it's really more of a coordination. Not to belittle all of the logistics, but I think that all of the very proven benefits of moving a start time to be later, really, it's surprising to me that it hasn't been enacted already. One very quick thing is I remember my daughter's freshman year. My daughter is an A student and tries to go to sleep on time. Can't believe she wakes up at 5:30, is on the bus at 6:20. Was studying for a test. It was a science test, and she was in the kitchen, and she had her head on my shoulder, and her eyes were shut. And I was doing flashcards, and I said to her, "You know, honey, I think maybe you should go to bed. You're exhausted," like almost in tears exhausted. And she's, "No, but I need to still study. I don't know everything yet." And I was like, "Yeah, but you're falling asleep on me." And this is just one example that I can think of that just highlights this problem. Good student trying to study for a test beyond exhausted, and I think we need to do something about it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Becht. I'm from Northborough, and I'm also a pediatrician in Southborough, and I have a freshman here at Algonquin. And I just wanted to take a brief moment to say how I deal with this issue every day in my office. I see teenagers who have real ramifications of the sleep deprivation, and because everyone has been so articulate here tonight, I don't feel like I need to reiterate all of those issues, but I hope I can represent all the hundreds of students who are not here tonight because they are coming to our offices, they're coming to the mental health offices, and if we can do something to change that, that would be a terrific thing we can do for these students. So thank you.
I have a senior daughter in Algonquin currently. Just a slightly different angle on the sleep issue. A lot of resources and a lot of good work goes into making Algonquin a fabulous school. But we're kind of having the kids go through this ordeal with one hand behind their back. The first period is pretty much thrown away because they're all half asleep. We're spending millions of dollars to make this a great, great school. Why do we want to handicap it by starting it way too early where they can't really learn as they should be? And it's almost from a financial management perspective that are we optimizing the effectiveness of this school if we're putting that handicap on the kids and putting them through that ordeal? Besides all the health issues, which I think are very well documented, the science is there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Michelle Brownlee. I'm the chapter leader of the Northborough/Southborough Chapter of Start School Later, and I know many of you here have heard from me before, and I'm not going to repeat all of the arguments I've made in the past, and I know people here have covered most of that ground and really brought a lot of personal stories to bear, which I think is really helpful. The one thing I did want to point out is to debunk sort of a myth about sleep deprivation for our kids. I mean, obviously, there's a lot going on here, right? We heard about people doing sports and homework, and there's a lot of pressures on these kids' lives. Sleep is just sort of adding to all of the pressure and anxiety that these kids have. But I do recall that back in the December meeting, during the debate among the school committee members, there was one member who talked about trying to get the kids to bed earlier. They have to be self-disciplined, they have to go to bed earlier. And I think there's ample research out there that shows that when you move the school's start time later, it does not result in kids going to bed later because you then move the start time later. I think some people think that, "Well, it's just going to shift the sleep time. The kids are still going to get very little sleep. It's just they're going to go to bed even later because they know they can sleep later in the morning." But the research actually shows that that's not the case. And in fact, another pediatrician who couldn't be here tonight sent an email, which hopefully some of you have gotten. I actually have packets here that have copies of all the emails that were sent to the school committee, and some of those people copied me. I'm going to pass those around after I'm done speaking so you can take a look. But that research is summarized in the American Academy of Pediatrics Recommendation, which is attached to his email, so you can take a look at that. But part of what I wanted to talk to you guys about tonight is just the urgency here. When I first contacted Dr. Gabran about this issue, it was 2012, and Colin, who spoke tonight, was in fifth grade, and Declan, my younger son, who's here tonight as well, was in third grade. And I thought, well, if I reached out back then, maybe by the time my kids were in high school, this wouldn't be an issue for them anymore. And we've been working on it and making progress, and I know it's not an easy issue to solve, and I know the transportation is key, and that's what we're going to be talking about tonight. But we need to make this happen. We need to try harder. Watching Colin, while he is certainly functioning well, he's not functioning at his capacity of what he could be doing, and I'd really like to see all of our Algonquin students doing the most that they can with their experience here because it is an amazing school. I also just wanted to emphasize the community support we have. I know sometimes people are busy, and it's hard to get people to come out to a school committee meeting. Tonight, we've got a lot of people here. Not everyone spoke, but I think most of the people here in the audience are here simply to show their support for this issue tonight. We've got a Facebook group that follows this issue that's nearly 400 people. We had 200 residents between Northborough and Southborough who signed a statewide petition asking the state to mandate an 8:30 or later start time statewide. We also did, or I guess the APTO did a survey a few years ago that had more than 300 respondents. More than 80% of those respondents were in favor of moving the start time later. So we have a lot of support for this issue. We need to find a way to do it, and I'm very much looking forward to Ms. Smith's findings tonight to hear what direction we're going to go. I'm guessing it's probably going to go in one of two directions. Either maybe we've found a way to actually move the start time a little bit later, which would be fabulous. And if that's the case, I would like to urge you to implement it sooner rather than later. I know there was some discussion about not implementing such a solution until the 2019 and '20 school year. If we can find a way to do it, let's give our kids those benefits sooner rather than later. The other possibility is maybe we haven't been able to find a solution yet. And if that's the case, I would ask you to please allocate some money in next year's budget so that we can hire some consultants to really help us tackle this issue that is going to be so beneficial to our community. And finally, as you know, the AAP recommendation would be for an 8:30 or later start time. We're still only talking about a very modest change here of 20 or 30 minutes. We really shouldn't stop there. We should look to that longer-term solution that would really give a more meaningful change for our kids.
Thank you, Michelle. It's been 20 seconds more than five minutes. But in the interest of time, we do want to get to the presentation.
Thank you for listening, and thank you very much for your consideration of this important issue.
Thank you. Down with audience sharing.
Is that with audience sharing? Last that committee members, unless there is objection by committee members, unless they share their comments during the appropriate meeting?
Yeah.
We'll move on to action on minutes, and we're going to start with voting to approve, and if we can do this all together as one, one vote, I would appreciate it, and make things smoothly, more smooth, I would hope. So, voting, first item is to approve the combined open meeting minutes of September 19th, 2017.
I will move for the Union and Southborough.
And second for the Union.
Second.
Oh, I saw it.
And Southborough.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Second for the Union and Southborough. And for the Region, you move for the Region, thank you, Lynn. Second for the Region.
Second.
Thank you, Paul. Second for the Region. And Northborough.
I move for Northborough.
Thank you, Keith. Second. Thank you, Susan. Okay. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
It's just a small one. And that is only that in the Wednesday, September 19th, 2017, combined under five start times, is Patricia Wilson, is absent from the session.
Huh? Okay.
So, because Liz Wilson has announced that she wants to sign that I just think can't be there to avoid confusion further.
Was she Wilson on Wednesday, September 19th, 2017?
No, about 30 years ago.
Oh, she was Wilson. Okay.
Unfortunately, I referenced it 30 years ago. I didn't mean to age her.
Oh, behind you. We just need to add the spin.
I'm sorry, maybe 20.
All right, so all in favor with the correction to number five?
Yeah, just add Smith.
Okay. Any other discussion or comments? Right, all in favor? Any abstentions? Two abstentions, okay, thank you. All right. Next one is the combined special open meeting minutes of October 25th, 2017. And motions. Do we have a repeat maybe perhaps?
Sure. I will move for Southborough and the Union.
Thank you. Jerry, second for the Union and Southborough. And Region?
I will. Second.
Thank you. Lynn and Paul, and Northborough.
I move for Northborough.
Thank you.
This is vote to release, right?
A vote to special open, it was open meeting, so they will be released automatically.
Which one were you on there? Well, I thought we did them all together.
But I don't think the Region should approve these, because they didn't have a form.
Well, there's technically no Northborough on the September 19th one either.
Right.
Vote in, approve it, so. So we don't need a vote of the Region, because there was no Region in session, it looks like there's enough.
Right, there was no form for the Region.
No form. Only form, okay, my apologies.
At one point.
So, we only need a vote from the superintendency Union. We did have Northborough and Southborough.
Northborough, Southborough, those are the only two.
Northborough, Southborough and the Union, no? Yeah, but Paul was there for a part of the time. Okay, we need four, I'm sorry. All right, so I'll take votes to approve from Northborough and Southborough.
All right. All in favor from Northborough and Southborough?
And abstinent? Okay, thank you. And Wednesday, December 20th, the open meeting minutes from combined, do we have quarts from everybody that evening? Okay, so, all right, let's see if we can get this approved by all the committees?
I will move for Southborough and the Union.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Jerry.
I move for Region.
Region?
I'll second.
Oh, thank you. Northborough?
I move for Northborough.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Abstinent? Okay. All right, so now we're voting to release, have these already been approved, or they need to be approved and released?
Just vote to release.
So we're just voting to release the combined executive session minutes of May 17th, 2017. Let me, we can do this together. Voting to release the combined executive session minutes of May 17th, 2017, and the combined executive session minutes of June 21st, 2017.
Can I do both?
Sure.
I move for Southborough and the Union that we accept the minutes, the executive session of, what's that?
Release?
Yes, that we have approved, that we release the executive session minutes of Wednesday, May 17th, 2017, and Wednesday, June 21st, 2017. So, move.
For Southborough and the Union.
Southborough and the Union?
Yes, second for both.
Seconded for the Southborough and the Union by Jerry.
For the Region.
Moved by the Region, seconded for the Region by Paul.
I move for Northborough.
Second.
All right. Any other comments or discussion on that? All in favor? Abstentions? Thank you, everyone. All right, so now we are ready for item number three on the agenda, the start time presentation.
So, good evening, everyone. The task that I was given was to look at the feasibility of a no-cost option that would allow Algonquin to begin the school day at 7:40 a.m. Many of us here tonight, and those in the viewing audience, recognize that the biology of teens is such that they would benefit from starting school later. I think many of us would not dispute the research and the research that we heard tonight. What we want to keep in mind is that the idea that, is to keep in mind, is the idea that adolescents are complex, and while the quality and quantity of sleep is important in any age person, or any, sorry, a person of any age, sleep is only one piece of the intricate puzzle of supporting academic achievement while also fostering student emotional health and well-being. Two things is a little difficult. So, at the September 2017 combined school committee meeting, this was the issue that I was asked to look at. Can Algonquin Regional High School have a start time of 7:40 a.m. without cost and with minimal disruption to the start times of the district's middle and elementary schools? I'm going to go ahead and ruin the presentation for you by providing you with an answer to the question. If we were to look at this simply, the answer is yes, we can have the high school begin at 7:40, and yes, we would have minimal disruption to the start times of the district's middle and elementary schools. But when we start to think about what minimal disruption actually is, the answer becomes more complicated than a simple yes. We would have minimal disruption in the times that the schools would start, but there's the potential to have a lot of disruption for the pre-K-12 staff, the extended day programs, and the larger community. So while the start times and end times of the district's schools can be easily changed by instituting new start times and dismissal times, there would be disruption. I'm aware that we have members from the local Start Schools Later chapter, and many audience members who are advocating for a later start time here with us this evening. And I just want to remind all of you listening to me that this is not a presentation about the merits of the research of starting school later. Through previous work by the SSL group and the district, that has been discussed, my task was to look at if Algonquin could start 20 minutes later without the district incurring a financial cost for shift in start times. So looking at the parameters, I was asked to investigate if a 20-minute shift could happen, while also being on the lookout for opportunities to gain more minutes. I was also asked to keep in mind that a 20-minute shift would need to be cost-neutral. In addition, I was asked to see how shift in the 20 minutes would impact the other schools' start times and dismissal times. This slide shows us the current start and dismissal times for our schools. As many of you are aware, the high school begins instruction at 7:20 a.m. and dismissals at 1:50. Because of the vast geographical area of the Northborough/Southborough region, some buses drop students off at Algonquin at 6:45 a.m. Some of the buses arrive this early because they have to travel back to Southborough to begin their next tier of runs. You can see from this chart that the district has four tiers to its bus runs. Algonquin is Tier 1, Melikan, Trottier, and Neary Tier 2, Proctor-Z, Woodward and Finn Tier 3, and Lincoln and Peaslee Tier 4. The district is using the buses in the most efficient manner that it can for maximizing the ability to get students to the 10 schools in the district. The staggered start times are facilitative to this process. What seems to be one of the simplest solutions is to having a later start time would be to add more buses to the current routes. Adding more buses could mean that students could sleep later because the buses could start their routes later. As I thought about adding buses as a solution, which is certainly not a new idea and has been discussed here before, it reminded me of what many of us tend to do. We have a problem, and we jump to what we think is a solution. In the book, Learning to Improve: How America's Schools, I think there's a picture, nope. My presentations didn't sync. We've, in the book, Learning to Improve: How America's Schools Can Get Better and Getting Better, Get Better at Getting Better, the authors discuss the concept of solutionitis, which is that we think we know the answer, but we don't have a clear understanding of what the problem is at hand. When we think about the why behind this body's entertaining shifting its schools 20 minutes, I wonder if we may be falling into this trap, the trap of solutionitis. What is the problem that the body is trying to address? On the surface, it appears that the problem is that we're trying to address the idea or the perceived need for more sleep for the adolescent population in the district. But my question is, what problem is this, again, is this shift in start time attempting to address, and how will we know if we are successful in addressing the problem? As Superintendent Johnson has mentioned in previous meetings, I am pursuing my doctorate, and my dissertation research is focused on understanding the nature of academic stress at Algonquin. To prepare for my dissertation proposal, I conducted some preliminary gathering of information. And what I've found so far is that sleep is only a piece of this complicated puzzle of understanding our students' stress. In a survey of 122 9th through 12th graders who take courses at our different academic levels at AP Honors and College Prep, 28% of them identified lack of sleep as one of their top stressors. This was coupled with not having enough time, as we heard tonight, to finish homework, papers, and projects, and just homework in general as being an issue. There were other items that they mentioned as stressors for them, things like the internal expectations they had for their own performance, the external expectations from the community. They also mentioned time management and technology. So there were many features that came up as stressors for our students, and it wasn't just sleep. While I just digress from the topic of the 20 minutes, and you probably weren't expecting that, it was intentional. As we continue to look at the ways we can support our students' social, emotional health, and overall well-being, the focus on just one solution, such as a 20-minute shift in time, I wonder if we're missing other factors of a more complex issue than just simply the start time of the school day. So now I'll get back to the, what I was told to do. So, the buses, back to this. And I had added those last two, for if you had the presentation before. So, for a no-cost option, adding an additional tier of buses that would run separately from the other routes, or adding buses to the current route, is not a viable solution because it costs money. And one of the reasons that it's also not a viable option is there's actually a driver shortage. And it's a national driver shortage, it's not just with our North Reading Transportation Bus Company. If the district were to entertain using another bus company for its transportation needs, the issue of having enough drivers for the expanding routes would still exist. If there was an overabundance of bus drivers available, this would not eradicate the fact that adding additional buses, or adding an additional fleet of buses and running them, sorry, I knew it started with that. It's embarrassing, excuse me, separately from the other bus routes would be costly. This was explored in previous presentations to this body. So how would having a 7:40 start time at Algonquin affect the bus runs for the middle schools and elementary schools? If the school day began at Algonquin at 7:40 a.m., there may be some ability to keep the start times at the elementary, middle schools similar to what they are now. However, this would be dependent on the actual routes and the traffic patterns. A 20-minute shift in Algonquin's start time would necessitate that all schools make some type of shift in their start and dismissal time. While 20 minutes might not be needed at each school, it's unknown until the routes are devised for the year and actually run. If Algonquin's start time changed, all of the district's elementary and middle schools would need to make a shift. It might not be, again, the entire 20 minutes, but there would have to be some shifting in those times. By beginning at 7:40 a.m., Algonquin would need to shift its end-of-the-day dismissal as well to 2:10, to ensure that the requirements set forth by 603 CMR 27 student learning time are being met. This shift to 20 minutes would affect NRT's ability to run their afternoon routes at the other schools. While the morning routes are less problematic, the afternoon is more difficult to navigate. Keep in mind that elementary and middle schools are also bound by the student learning time regulations. If Algonquin were to shift its start time 20 minutes, and consequently its dismissal time by 20 minutes, Algonquin students would be leaving here at the parking lot at 2:19. Both Melikan and Trottier, right now, dismiss at 2:25. So you can see that there's no way you can make a shift at Algonquin without having it affect the dismissal times of the other schools. Bus stops can be consolidated to gain some minutes, but this would only be done with student safety in mind. High school and middle school bus stops are routinely examined to make sure that the routes are efficient and safe, and that's a way to gain some minutes. Gains in minutes from these adjustments are usually not at a rate, though, that would affect gaining us 20 minutes, or something like that. Moving forward, taking the busing challenges in mind, if a decision is made to change Algonquin's start time, and consequently its dismissal time by 20 minutes, then all schools in the district should start and end 20 minutes later than their current times. If you decide to make this change, some of the things you probably want to keep in mind are the Northborough and Southborough extended day programs and communicating with them, possible issues with traffic patterns, and the pre-K-12 teachers and staff. You may also want to discuss whether a 20-minute shift would actually produce benefits for student achievement and student emotional health and well-being. And then finally, as was just mentioned in the audience sharing, if you decide to move ahead, you might want to discuss spending some money on a transportation consultant. And that concludes my presentation. I thank you for your attention. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Terry. Would you mind answering any questions that the members might have? If there are any? None? None? I appreciate, again, your time and your research, volunteering for this.
I agree, volunteering is the right word.
Volunteered?
You're accepting the challenge.
And the committee members?
Yep. I'll add something, which is that one of the questions that I had, which was, well, which was bothering me, and there was no real way to figure it out, other than I just got in my car and did it. So my concern was if we have Algonquin start later, then would we basically eat up those 20 minutes because traffic on Route 9 and Route 20 and Route 85 would be, you know, there'd be so much more volume that you would end up really getting here at the same time. And so the only way to do that was to run my own little experiment. So I got the longest bus run that I could find, I could find, I didn't find it at all, that Central Office could find, and I actually followed the exact bus run 20 minutes later. that Central Office could find, and I actually followed the exact bus run 20 minutes later. And what I found was that in the morning, I don't think there's going to be any impact. I think that if you start at Algonquin 20 minutes later, that, you know, I can't judge, there's too many unknowns. I don't know what the road Bartlett Street is at 20 minutes later. I don't know what the volume is going to be because there weren't buses stopping the traffic. It was just me. But when you get down to the, I was just saying, Southborough, the little guys, the Finn and the Woodward, then there's a lot of unknowns. And so just doing, on a perfect day, weather wasn't an issue, traffic wasn't an issue, I was surprised there was as few cars on the road as there were, so I don't know what was going on. They were still in the morning, five minutes later, and I was just following the same route. In the afternoon, because of all those variables, you know, like if there's an accident on 495, everybody piles onto 85. That probably doesn't happen first thing in the morning, but by the end, by sort of the end of the day, you have a greater possibility that it can happen. So by the end of the day, I think there would be a much greater impact in moving the end time 20 minutes than in moving the start time 20 minutes in the morning. So that's just my own little experiment. And I thought it'd do.
Thank you for sharing that. Comment on that.
Yeah, I also, I mean, as somebody, I'm sorry, with K-38, I think, I mean, believe me, I got three kids through Algonquin, getting them up Southborough, South, South, Southborough, so farthest from the school you could live, and they got through it. So 20 minutes would be awesome. They would have so appreciated that 20 minutes in the morning. But talking from the Southborough schools, the one thing I think we're going to impact by pushing is it was up there, extended day. Those are the little ones whose, I think a lot of, you know, we really have to coordinate and make sure. And I think it could impact parents of the little ones who maybe didn't use extent, didn't need a morning daycare because they were able to stick around until the time you dropped them off and now might have to do that one extra thing because that 20 minutes is, I just know from when I was doing it, when my kids were little, that if, you know, I needed to get them to school on a bus at a certain time, I could still get them on the bus and make my way to work, and that 20 minutes could play into it. So I just think, I know we keep focusing on one thing, we have to consider the impact of that, make sure there's extended day available, make sure those parents understand that.
Thank you.
I'm actually listening carefully to everyone's comments, and I, you know, was very affected more and more, like the kids coming up. And so I really appreciate you coming up to speak. I know it's not easy. But one of the things about moving the start time later, 20 minutes, I lived in the Peaslee District, which is, and Peaslee and Proctor or Lincoln are the two latest. And I remember that in the beginning of the school year especially, the kids would be sitting in the hallway waiting for the bus to pick them up. And they get out of school, what is it, 3:10, I think, something like that? And so, you know, the kids wouldn't be home even, you know, on a good day until 4 o'clock. And I remember, I'm pretty easygoing, so it didn't bother me, but I know a lot of people were upset, especially like in the beginning when the kids were sitting in the hallways, and the parents would actually come and pick the kids up. So that caused even more of a problem because the parents were coming to pick the kids up because they couldn't wait for the kids to come home, and they thought it was terrible. The kids were sitting in the hallway waiting for the bus to come. So I think one of the problems is that we do have that elementary school, it's two elementary schools that are already starting pretty late. I mean, because it was, I went back to work while my kids were still in the elementary school, and I worked down in, near Rhode Island, so, and I didn't get to really leave for work until 9 o'clock, so I get into work at 10. So I know that, just a little experiment on Peaslee and Lincoln, I mean, that's probably about the latest that you could have an elementary school start and come home. And so now if you're trying to push them back 20 more minutes, it's just, the way our district is, we already have two schools that are probably pushing it already to the edge. And, you know, and I don't know if, it does seem like what Christina has done is very helpful, but I don't, I don't think we could do it unless there was some sort of way that those two schools didn't change their times because it's already late. They're the little experiment, and you have the parents kind of already complaining.
Yeah, they do. I will say, as a Southborough, until I saw that chart, actually had never realized that Northborough had four bus runs and that those two schools were that much later. I just, I was.
And I will add that, as if, I didn't, my children went through Lincoln Street School, which I do know that the bus that my children rode on was not ending its run until 4 o'clock. And to push it 20 minutes later to make it to 4:20, that means you're going to have children, little elementary school children, getting off the bus when it's dark. And that concerns me. Any comments?
So, everybody knows I'm relatively new to this conversation, and so don't get mad. So I guess the thing that I keep coming back to, and if somebody just wants to summarize why we can't do this in like a nutshell, that would be fine. But I just, sort of as a fresh mind, thinking about this, it seems like there's some elementary schools that are starting on the late side and high schools starting on the early side. And what, could we just flip them? Like, I know there are logistics with both of those, and I've heard that that's an idea. I'm just thinking about, you know, and so. Well, yes, but they kind of sprung it on the parents. Right, so, but like, maybe work through it and figure out a way to do it. And I think maybe the, I've heard that the bus schedule is unreliable with the little kids, but could we build in like a little bit of a buffer of time or something? Because I know there's already a buffer, because like, for example, Finn and Woodward, school's dismissed and the buses don't actually get to the schools for like an extra 15, 20 minutes after school's over, so the kids are like waiting for 15, 20 minutes. So like, maybe that time could be used for something. I mean, I'm just wondering like how that all panned out because that just seems like it might work. But I could be wrong. I'm probably wrong, since we're not heading in that direction.
I defer to the superintendent.
So I don't, I'm just patiently listening. And I will say, that is absolutely something that, I think on the surface, that when you're first hearing about this issue would seem, this very important issue, it would seem that it would be a simplistic solutionist mindset, I guess Christina presented. And we probably looked at no less than, I don't know, 15 or 20 different bus scenarios. And because of certain nuances that are built into the regional structure and the bus schedules and the school schedules, I'm not suggesting that this can't be something that we overcome if we finalize a target. The difficulty has been that, I think, we keep having conversations and we need to say at some point, back into this decision. Unfortunately, we've looked at also tiering. So you ask, what is the significant problem? Part of it is, and the reason why we're sitting all around the table, is that we are a complex district. There are very few of us as school districts across the Commonwealth, that being districts that are not regionalized K-12. We are not. So the first primary point of conversation seems to always be, once we listen to the very good and very important rationale for a change, which is not something we can dispute. We've certainly had this conversation, and tonight, I think, far more eloquently stated than we probably have in the last three years. And the kids' voices are very powerful, as are all the parents here tonight. It's always been a cost factor. And again, this isn't about students being more important than money or less important, but it's the reality of the work that we do. Right? We go through an entire discussion, and it is a reality that we have to deal with. And so what we found through this process was tiering off, which is what we could do. We could tier off of one of those four structures, those four tiers that we identified. And what does that look like if we tiered Northborough off separately, so it wasn't tied to an Algonquin run? If it's not tied to an Algonquin run or a Southborough run, then that opens up the door of possibilities and options. And so what would that look like to K-8 Northborough, K-8 Southborough, and/or Region? There are 31 buses that drop off our students. Arguably, they're not full. And we haven't had a conversation about what that statement means in terms of looking at what the possibilities are. And then there are 15 Northborough, 15 Southborough buses and 17, I think, Southborough, Northborough buses. And so what does that look like as a cost factor if we tier off of the regional structure? Because it would be a singleton tier separate from what we now realize at the regional level. And so that, you know, that's been the issue in terms of cost. But the reality of just flipping brings about a lot of other issues that come about in terms of conversation. Some of what we've been talking about is, you know, the youngsters move home and who's home, and then the parents have to get off to work earlier, and then who's watching them in the end of the day. So it's as complex for our K-8 community or our K-5 community as it is when we start moving those times around. So we've looked at many, many different scenarios, and, you know, the start time folks offered some scenarios as well. You know, our bus companies know how tight our routes are now. And so starting with the young ones first has also added minutes because lots of times the high school students aren't getting on the bus, and the little ones, the younger ones, seem to take more time to get on the bus, they're not ready, the mom and dad come out. So the problem with tiering off with an elementary school first, among other concerns about timing and so forth. And what does that mean is that the bus routes are longer because we have to add minutes, not reduce minutes. So there's, you know, a lot more information I can share, but I wanted to address your specific questions, Katara, which are excellent points and have been raised.
Yeah. Because I, just to add to that, I just, I feel like to go through all of this, to just only add 20 minutes to start time later, that doesn't really seem to be addressing the problem and what I'm hearing what the problem is. So it just seems like if we're really going to do it, we should just do it, I think. And, you know, and I think that also, the families who would be, because I mean, I, you know, I don't know that I'd love to bundle my kindergarteners next year off to school at 7:45 in the morning, I probably, you know, whatever.
The problem is, it'd be six, 6:40. If we've left it.
Right. But the truth of the matter is, they're up already, unlike the high school kids. And also, I do want them to be able to go to, you know, to sleep, get good sleep when they're high school students. So it's like, if that's the trade-off, that is maybe the trade-off. I don't know. But, you know, and that might be something that parents would be, would recognize as the conversation went on, you know? But I know it's complicated.
It's really.
Thank you for recognizing that. It is complicated.
Yeah. We are one of the most complicated districts.
Katara.
I agree with Katara. I mean, to me, if we're going to do this, we should kind of go big, and, you know, I don't think 20 minutes is that big. And I wonder, the tiers, I wonder if those are the right tiers? And you said we looked at a bunch of different permutations. Have we ever looked at putting the middle school and the high school on the same bus?
Yes.
And what was the problem with that?
Well, putting the two of them on the same bus then alters all the other routes, which is a possibility. And I don't know, at that point, whether we have to add buses or not add buses, because those are the two sizes of students that are the most critical mass. So you're looking at needing at one time more number, more buses than 31. Because we have 600 students at Melikan, 600 students at Trotter, and 1,500 students at Algonquin. So 31 buses would not be able to handle that. But, you know, I think that's part of our conversation tonight, is a discussion about, is 20 minutes enough? That was a number that was decided on to start somewhere where we had a point, sort of a target point that we could back into and suggest that through the work that we were doing, if we could capture more than 20 minutes without disruption, significant disruption, there's going to be a disruptive factor somewhere, then what does that look like for minutes? So since that sort of target, if you will, of minutes was put forth as a start to do something, I think that was a point well raised tonight, we need to do something. And a decision needs to be made if, in fact, we are going to back into something so that we can move forward. I was looking at my notes, and the first presentation I made was pretty much the first year, and that was two years, three years from today. We know from the material that's been presented and our own research, three years is not an abnormal amount of time for people who are successfully moving something so significant. I think we talk about Fairfax County, and they took 10 years, you know? And some of these other districts that are mentioned are, you know, singletons, the K-12 structure, without the enormity of the number of routes. So, you know, while I'm not pleased that we haven't made progress in three years, I also know that if we make progress in five or four, I'll be, I think we'll be doing well, considering all of the research that's out there for how long this is taking. But I think we have to make a decision, what it is we want to do, and try our best to back into that. Because it's been a moving target, and when the conversation changes to, we should have, now the middle school should start later or earlier, you know, is it 20 minutes, is an hour, is it five? The first presentation we made, someone asked, can't you just move it five minutes? And the question then was, is five minutes enough to make all this disruptive change and to cause a disruptive factor so this would not be well received? And no, it isn't. So now we're discussing, is 20 minutes enough? I think we can do 20 minutes. I think that from our research after this conversation, we found that some things where we could pick up minutes that may not necessarily impact the K-8 system, that showed up just by our own observation and saying, 20 minutes, what does that look like? We know that we can do something around ridership here at the high school, that our buses, according to the presentation that we asked Jay Sullivan to present to all the regional school districts, because we're not the only district that's dealing with this issue. I pretty much get an email a day from some superintendent saying, okay, have you ever explored this issue? And obviously, we have a wealth of information with some very knowledgeable people in our community who are sharing their research with us. And so Jay Sullivan presented to the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools at our request this past fall, and he pointed out a couple things that if we have the time to get this in place, we could probably reduce a few buses, which would spin off and pick up the farthest most ends of Northborough and Southborough ahead of what we've ever done before. But we have to make a decision, are we going to do, are we going to suggest that 20 is a reasonable start until, quite frankly, we do what we really should be doing as a high-performing high school? And that's looking at our total schedule for our students. And I was, you know, that was part of our first presentation. And interestingly enough, I came across a grant, which unfortunately is no longer funded, but is incredibly appropriate, which was the TIME Grant. And it's Time for Innovation: Making It Matter in Education. You know, with the new principle here, Sarah and I have, Dr. Walsh and I have had a lot of conversations about, yes, start time is important, but is that just enough for Algonquin? We are a high-performing district. We have been for the 30 years I've been familiar with this district. And one of the things that we aren't looking at is expanding the school day, running two different tiers. We brought that up initially in saying, you know, flex time. It wasn't well received because there was an equity issue. But if we could provide an equitable solution, so we're running two tiers, because not, maybe not every student this would work for, right? And some it would. But to provide an equitable access to two tiers of instruction where the first tier loops back and picks up another tier of students, to do that is an intense instructional change, structural change to a high school, changing in a meaningful way a high school schedule. Both Dr. Walsh and I have done so at the high school level. Takes a considerable amount of time to get it right. You can always tweak, but you have to get it right, at least substantively the first time. So we have things that we can do. We should not end up having this be the last time we have this conversation. 28% of our students, it's a high population and it's important, but we're looking for a simplistic way to fix a very complex problem. we're looking for a simplistic way to fix a very complex problem or an opportunity, which is bigger than just the hands of the clock. And I think that's what Tina, Christina alluded to when she said, what is the overall action problem? The fact that we are moving forward into a learning management system brings up all kinds of new opportunities for innovation as a school district. If we're expected to do something now, we miss an opportunity to do far more than we, we could possibly do. If we're suggesting that twenty minutes is our target, then we will back into that as best we can with as minimal disruption. But all through this conversation at the table, we've talked about things that we need to address if we're deciding tonight that twenty minutes is the right amount to start or not. There are many conversations that we need to have with people, which is again why we're suggesting, okay, pick the time, now let us have the conversation so when it launches, it's not a Wayland event. It's not the superintendent saying, yeah, this is right, let's go. And they pulled it back immediately because they didn't take the time to have those conversations that needed to be had with extended day or South, or Northborough extended day. I believe they can flip that. They, I think that's doable, but we need a point that we're moving towards.
Just, that's what I was.
And I'm hoping that that's what we decide tonight. This is three years. We need to sort of decide what it is we're gonna do and move towards that implementation. Because it's been three years of we could do this, we could do this, we could do this, what about that? The research suggests this, which it does. What about middle school? What about twenty minutes? What about a half an hour? What about five minutes? And I think, um, you know, I believe we are a strong enough and successful enough district that we can make anything happen, but we have to have a clear indication what that is. It has been a lot of conversation and I, I appreciate Mrs. Brownlee pointing out that it is not true that we have not looked at this. We have looked at it for three years and we're continuing to look at it, which means it is important to us. And so we, we've had many meetings, we've had many discussions, and we keep looking at the subject. But it is important that we go forward in some direction. No, yes, twenty minutes, let's go for it and, and really innovate and, and make this far more of an innovative experience for our students and really embrace all those educational changes that people are talking about that should be things that we are talking about. So that's.
If the thought is twenty minutes might not be enough, and it sounds like the elementary school kids would need more time than just that twenty minutes, because it's gonna take them longer to get on the bus, do we know how much time that would, because then it would give the high school if we flip flopped?
We've looked at, we've looked at just about every version of a schedule we could possibly look at. We are so tight on our runs rate now, and I think we can find some economies of scales if we spin off some of those buses that we no longer necessarily need to have coming here. We could pick up some time. If we offload our buses and we don't hold them back at certain schools, you know, we've been observing this, where they hold the students on the bus before they, they, um, they disembark.
Yep.
That's about changing duties for teachers so that the two, teachers are there to receive the kids when they're coming off the bus sooner and we get those buses moving out of the lots. There's a good possibility that we could, we could shrink that twenty minutes of time between schools. And I think the discussion about the twenty was, let's try that and if we can, you know, let's have a target that we, we focus on. And if in the work, we find additional minutes, then we add that and expand the twenty minutes to more. So one of the positive things that we're doing, and we've never done this before, we're handing all our routes to our bus company now. We pretty much know who the students are going to be. And so for other reasons, just in this discussion, our bus company will be doing next year's routes in about three weeks. That's far more information than we've ever had, and it's sort of revolutionary. We asked them, can you define our routes now so that we can start tweaking them? And so we know who our students are progressing through grades. We pretty much have our K enrollments. We talked to them again just this week and they're ready. Uh, it's a downtime for them. So that's really powerful information for us to have, to start looking at where we can sort of reduce and, and, and minimize time if we possibly can. The other thing that we've been talking about here at the high school is in addition to tiering off, because we don't necessarily, may not need all those buses, it's possible that we look at our students who take out parking permits. Right now, they take them out and, you know, whenever they take them out. But it's about fifteen percent of our student population that drive, they don't need to be on our buses. So what does that mean in terms of saving buses that are coming to the high school that could actually be going out to our elementary schools and our middle schools sooner? And not having as much lag time between routes? So there's been a lot of positive work that's been done with the conversations that we've had with the bus company. Um, and, you know, is, I feel a little nervous about twenty because we haven't implemented. But the question well posed, is twenty enough? It will take the high school a couple of years to develop at least an innovative schedule that's going to embrace all the practices that we feel we would like to see in place. And are we willing to wait and do one schedule change with a possible two tiering? There'll be a cost factor to that, because those buses will circle back on basically another tier, but it would allow students to enter Algonquin at eight thirty or eight twenty. Students could choose the first tier arrival at seven twenty and students could choose the last. The challenge would be making sure there's equity of course offerings so that all students would have access to a rich curriculum and expanding the school day. That's the kind of conversations we should be having along with the start time. So that's a discussion I think the school committee needs to embrace.
Other, other comments? Kathy, did you wanna add?
Oh, go ahead, Kathy. Um, I'm not. So I think I, I had the conversation with Christine before, that my sister lives in Arkansas, um, and they have the two tiered. So, um, kids who wanna start early can start early, kids who wanna start later can start later. It did come into factor though, the kids that started later more, like we'd have to have buses for our kids, where they, most of the kids that did the later time drove to school or had a parent drive them to school. And she said it does work because the kids, and the kids that play sports, their last period is their practice time for most of those kids. Um, you know, like my husband and I joke that if we could sleep until seven o'clock, that'd be a good, you know, a good day in our house. And I do, you know, I do think, so, you know, for me to sleep until seven o'clock or my daughter to sleep until seven o'clock would make a huge thing. And sleep is an issue in our house, but, you know, I have a son that plays three sports too, and he's in bed every single night at nine thirty at night. He shuts his phone off, shuts his computer off, and he goes to bed. And I've had parents say that their kids try to text him for a ride to school, and they're like, he's in bed at nine thirty. So, um, with all of his homeworks, I don't know, I'm not quite sure. When they do get tired. As far as flipping the schedule goes, my only issue would be as far as my kids do extra curricular activities, whether it be the clubs here and they play sports. So if I flipped it, um, my kids, you know, my daughter plays hockey. Sometimes she's got hockey games at eight o'clock at night. She's not getting home until eleven o'clock. And then she either is doing homework before or after. If I, you know, and flipping it would mean she's staying, she is gonna stay up later because that's what they're gonna do to get their homework done. So I'm not sure, you know, that's gonna be a later day for a lot of kids. I think that they do need more sleep. I just don't know if the flipping piece of it and for, and it's not gonna be all kids at the high school, it'd be just maybe half or, you know, I don't even know how many kids play sports here, but that's, or do the, the clubs or the curricular, extra curricular things, that's just something that I personally would keep in mind for me. But I, you know, I, I don't know if starting with twenty minutes, I mean, twenty minutes to me is something, a half an hour, me, twenty minutes or half an hour. It is, it is starting somewhere.
Okay. Oh, sorry, Susan.
I was gonna say, I know a lot of the, the stresses I really found interesting in that presentation in that homework was number one. I know Northborough started a homework study group to study that with the policies. I don't know what's going on at the high school level with the homework policy. And I think addressing the issue as a whole, we're all, like she said, just the one solution with the buses and talking the buses out and that in the twenty minutes, it may not be enough to solve the problem when you have homework, technology, and all of these other issues that I think we maybe should think about waiting and discussing it to adjust the whole situation and child as a whole to get the most benefit out of what we can do to help them achieve what they want to achieve. So that's just my two cents.
Thank you, Susan. Jerry?
I just wanted to kind of state, at least from my perspective, the obvious in that it doesn't seem like there's a no-cost solution to this problem. And, and, you know, we looked at it a few years ago, we actually did note some of the costs. And just so people know, I have two kids, I had two children at Algonquin, and, and the early start time is definitely a problem, okay? And not every, not every child goes to bed at nine o'clock. Some of them, they fight and they struggle and they go to bed later and then, you know, one, one of my kids had no problem. The other one is struggling every day, we have to pull him out of bed. But I, I'm not sure that there is a no-cost problem. And I am a, a little bit concerned about pursuing, um, a direction here that doesn't seem to have a lot of support. It's like a compromise that no one likes very much. And that might not be the compromise that the people in the audience are looking for. They're really looking for an eight-thirty start time. And, you know, you start with twenty minutes and they're not gonna be happy and, you know, we're gonna have a disruption of the school and that, that's the main caution that, that I have there is that, um, you know, it's, uh, I think it's, it might be more beneficial to try to, well, maybe again, look at what it would cost to actually meet what they're asking for and to then take a look at the hurdles that we'd have to go through to get the money, because it would be expensive. You know, I think it would be, it would just be a lot of money. I'm not gonna say it can't, we can't get it through, but it would be, you know, when we, when we get that kind of money, we have to go in front of hundreds of people in a town meeting and get it, you know, as we all know on the school committee, so.
I do know that. That, that's a good point, Jerry. I would like to see those numbers to know exactly how much more it would cost to have those extra buses just for Algonquin to start.
Seven hundred thousand dollars.
Seven hundred thousand?
That, to have an only Algonquin tier, that was three years ago, so it's more now.
It would be more.
What's that in terms of, in proportion to the budget?
Is that tiering the schedule? Or is that just making it a later start time?
That's giving Algonquin their own bus run so that we could be agnostic in terms of start time. They, we can start whenever they want it, because Algonquin has their own bus.
Do you think that cost has gone up because of increases in wages and?
The buses have.
It's probably higher than seven hundred thousand.
Right. Because, and, and that number is from when we had discussions with our state legislators about band-aiding start time. And so we had to figure out how much it would cost each district for that to happen.
But that would be divided by the three districts?
Well, then, then how does regional transportation reimbursement? So now.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah. Now, the one point six million, right?
Right.
That we're, I mean, not that that's our reimbursement, but now Northborough, Southborough and Region might now be separate entities. Only Region will be reimbursed. Now Northborough and Southborough are on their own. And oh, by the way, we, we get a huge volume discount because we have so many buses and we're doing so many runs. That goes away too. So there's a lot of impacts to just, it's not just, seven hundred thousand was just the, you know, the cost of both the buses.
Okay. Any questions?
Are the faculty behind the change in start time? Are they supportive of it? What is, what is their, does anyone know what their view is?
That would be another, another issue, and it's very complicated.
So there was a survey that was done at the same time the students were surveyed and, um, you know, I, I think the faculty has the same issues that anyone else would have who has potentially small children. And so I think I wouldn't say their concerns would be insurmountable. And while we're very concerned about our school climate and our teachers and, and all of those intangibles, um, I think that twenty minutes for the faculty is a disruption. With appropriate time and notice, that it could probably be addressed. But again, it's the why of not doing it in September. If we want this to be successful, we need to make sure that all the stakeholders involved are behind this and that it's not disruptive to our students, to our staff, to our school community, however you, we define that, nine through twelve or K through eight. So their concerns were expressed when we conducted a survey in fifteen, and it would be similar to the other concerns we'd have about making life adjustments by twenty minutes.
Are they thinking that the kids would have a benefit of it?
I think it was mixed. You know, I, I, I think at that time, the research was, they obviously know who's in their first period class, uh, but part of the conversations is, would be Algonquin does not have a rotating schedule either. And so the same students are coming to school the same time every day, and that's a disruptive force for, you know, that has potential impact on how the students are performing if they happen to have calculus first period and they're not morning students as opposed to rotating it. So all of these are the conversations that need to take place with Dr. Walsh, and I know that she is quite enthusiastic to do so and working very closely with her staff. She's a new principal. It is true that unless the school committee, the superintendent, and the high school principal are on board, it's not going to be successful. So those three stars have to align. And I think that's, that's key to success.
I just want to see, has anyone who hasn't had, has any member who hasn't had the opportunity to speak, like to share? All right. Uh, to Kathy, I'm sorry.
So, um, so I've been, I think, involved in these discussions, because I've been on the regional school committee for nine years, so, um, since day one. The, the statement that for four years, we've been looking at this and nothing has been done is a really unfair misrepresentation of what's been going on. Because the years that I've been chair, the issue of start time comes up every single solitary time we discuss an agenda item. Is there something new, different, whatever we should be discussing? What's been going on at the central office has been working consistently. And oh, by the way, we also have all new high school administration. So there's been an incredible amount of turnover. So, um, this proposal of moving twenty minutes has just only this year that I've been involved taken an exorbitant amount of time of the entire administration's schedule. It's, it's, it's not just moving twenty minutes. Every single solitary aspect of the schools, because all the schools are affected, has to be just majestically communicated, right? And that takes a lot of time, a lot of effort. And I think that as we discuss this, twenty minutes is fine, but you know what? We can get twenty minutes when your kid starts to drive, or if the kid down the street starts to drive. Like, like twenty minutes, I've watched my kid change twenty minutes and I didn't think it made any difference to him at all. So if we're gonna do this, and nobody has ever suggested this is not a good idea, the science is compelling, and we have always been in favor of doing this and doing something, then, um, I personally would rather see all the cycles that go into making these kind of changes devoted to making a really meaningful change.
I agree.
And not making a Band-Aid of twenty minutes. That, by the way, once the Southborough safety complex starts getting built, right? We, we can't guarantee that twenty minutes is actually gonna, gonna, gonna happen. And I'm sure Northborough's got the same things, right? So, um, so transportation.
Main Street.
Exactly. Transportation is one way, it's an incredibly time-consuming way to approach the problem. But I think that with, I mean, we're just at a really good place in terms of new administration who has a lot of experience doing these kinds of innovative things. I mean, I mean, things like virtual learning is, you know, we're on the precipice of that kind of stuff. I mean, there's a lot of really innovative things that we can do. That's where I think I would like to see the administration spending their time.
Thank you. Amy?
Yeah, um, I, you know, I, at first blush, when they said move it twenty minutes, you know, it's like, oh, well, twenty minutes is almost a half an hour and maybe that'll make a difference. But, um, I, I agree that if, that my worry about just moving it twenty, if we moved it twenty minute, the start time twenty minutes, is that it would be disruptive enough to the lower grade. the start time 20 minutes, is that it would be disruptive enough to the lower grades, but yet wouldn't really do it, wouldn't really be the solution. And, and that the cost of it to the lower grades and the younger kids would be, particularly the two schools I spoke of, would be worse than benefit we would receive, which, you know, I don't think, like Kathleen said, when the kids start to drive and then automatically they get to go to school later or get up later because they're not catching a bus, then, you know, it, it doesn't really make a lot of difference for, for the, for the kids. And that if we, I think we need to figure out, our goal should be to figure out how to really solve the problem. I mean, I do think there's a lot of stresses that go on in the high school that Christina mentioned. But I think everything now is all coming together because it's all at the same time. Eventually, there was a time when, you know, you couldn't take six AP courses at a time. There were certain things in place that now you can. So now the kids want to. There was a time when sophomores couldn't take AP courses. You had to be a junior. Now you can. And so that's, all that academic influence and the homework and AP and honors level classes and is just getting more than it was. I was thinking, well, when I went to school, but yeah, when I went to school, it was, you know, open campus and, you know, all sorts of things. And I went to school at, it was eight o'clock. So, and I just think, and then the technology, everything is, is coming together now that it's really exacerbate, exacerbating the effect of sleep. And sleep is an issue in and of itself. And it's a health issue if you don't get enough sleep. I mean, I was just reading things even for adults that people aren't getting enough sleep as adults. And I find myself, you know, I have to go to Starbucks. If I fall, my rule is if I fall asleep on the train, I have to go to Starbucks and get another cup of coffee. Because I know I will-
Which you'll probably need tomorrow because your regional meeting is going to be running so late tonight that you're not going to get very much sleep.
All right, yes. I'm used to it. I'm, I'm used to it. I'll make, I'll catch, I'll try to catch up on the weekend. So all of the stuff that the kids were saying, I could, I could really relate to. So I do think that, you know, I like the flipping, you know, trying to figure out and really working towards a solution that would work. Either totally looking at our bus tiers and, you know, getting a consultant in.
We recognize the health benefits of that extra sleep.
Yeah.
I'll be very brief.
Thanks.
But I've been quiet mostly because I'm fairly new to the committee and don't have the longitudinal. And I certainly appreciate getting these, these synopses of, you know, where this has come from and how the conversation's evolved. I do agree with those who've said, you know, let's, let's do it right. Let's make meaningful change. I think that makes a lot of sense versus a Band-Aid. That was, I think that was well put. As, and I'm also not a parent of teenagers yet. But as a parent of young kids, I would say that I would be apt, and I think I can speak for others in my neighborhood to support change if it, if you know what it, you know, where it's coming from and what the trade-offs are being made for at the high school, I think you can get parents of younger children to, to buy into that process.
Thank you. All right. Are we ready?
I, I think we should continue to pursue those things that we've already identified because in the process of doing that, we don't know what will determine. So looking at, as I said, the bus company will be doing our routes, so we will have them in April. And looking at what that means when they, when they plan for next year's routes. I don't think it's, it's one or the other. I do agree that I think that's the right direction to move in because when you impose a schedule change anywhere, particularly in high school, it is a significant event. Whether it's done for the right reasons or you think it's done for the right reason, it turns out not to be so at all. But it is important for us to know eventually what is the final cost factor going to be because it may turn out to be less than we even imagined. So the things that we, I mentioned earlier that are sort of aha moments for us as we've continued to explore this, like what can we do to reduce the number of buses just because? And then how can that be a meaningful experience? Because as it is right now, even if we weren't talking about sleep study, our buses are tight, very tight, and our runs are consistently late. Because there, we, we think there are, you know, five or 20 or 15 minutes to get from one end to the other is the right amount of time. And kids are standing out in the cold too late, too long. So looking at consolidating bus stops, not a pleasant discussion, but our buses stop just about at every house. And, you know, that's time. That's time, and time is start time. So it would be perhaps less intrusive than we think if we did some of these other things that were probably long overdue. So looking at bus stops, looking at our parking, how many students at the high school are actually taking out parking permits and have them take out them, the pit permits earlier. And so that we know we don't have to count that seat, we can reduce buses. Looking at having those students disembark sooner and having teachers available for them to be in the school and welcomed in the school, not holding buses back. All these things result in time saved. So we can continue to explore that, and we should, while doing what we really need to be doing is really, and that's having the time to embrace innovation, which we know is how kids are now learning in the 21st century.
Thank you. I just, I just want to make one, one last thought is that I think that makes a lot of sense because I think that, I think any school starting at 7:20, that just seems very early. Like whether it's, so even if we were going to like flip something or, or sort, having any of the schools starting at 7:20 is just a very early time. I mean, if you have a bus coming at 6 something, that's just really early.
6:20.
Yeah, exactly. So, I mean, it's really early. So I think that in addition, you know, if we can combine them, I don't think it needs to be put on hold, looking at maybe saving the 20 minutes somewhere, right, so that you could have the earliest start time at 7:40 for whatever school that ends up being.
Right. Thank you.
And the high school buses really are the one, I mean, if I look at our neighborhood, I think there's only like, on average, like one or two kids getting off because it's not just the parking permits that are being taken out, but those kids are driving other kids as well, and siblings.
That's true, but I have to mention the Avalon bus is packed.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah. I mean, I'm not saying everything, but I'm just saying, like, if I look, if I follow my bus into our neighborhood in the afternoon, it will stop at all the different stops, but it's not that often that somebody's getting off of it.
And the Avalon bus does give the, afford kids who might work at Wegmans or other-
Places, right.
Yeah, no, each of them are different.
Yeah.
Or each different.
They are.
It's a complicated issue.
One quick thing.
Okay.
First, I want to thank all the folks who came, and, you know, you made a lot of good points, and you were heard.
Thank you.
And since you're an active bunch, I wanted to throw a suggestion out there. You know, this is going to be a money problem in some way, shape, or form, I think, at the end of the day.
It's always at the end of the day.
Kathleen made reference to the state reimbursement for regional transportation, which is supposed to be 100%. I don't think it ever has been. And it's now 60-something, I think. If you could write a letter to your state reps, I don't know if you've already done this, but if not, write a letter to your state rep, your state senator, say, why isn't this at 100%? You know, it's, it's, you're, it's part of the reason that you're depriving our kids of sleep, if you want to put it that way. But, you know, we heard long ago, if you get 10 letters, they, they notice. And I'm talking about letters, not emails so much. But, so, just my thought.
Thank you, Paul. Great suggestion.
Good point.
Okay, so I'd like to move the agenda along. I recognize that there is another committee meeting after this one, so we'll forge ahead to item number four, snow day update.
So, it didn't snow today.
Woo!
I can't say that we're, and I don't think there's anyone except maybe members of the senior class that are disappointed about that because they don't have to make up the days according to state regulations. And so there have been a lot of suggestions. We are, and I, I don't mean to minimize the fact that we've had six days out of school, but we haven't had 10. And so Mass General laws suggest that school is in session until June 30th or the completion of 180 days. Our calendars suggest that. And so for us, that's day six, and that brings us up to June 25th. Not really a palatable time because it's a Monday, but it isn't. Then the first time we've entered school on a Monday. In fact, just to give a, a sort of a perspective, it's been since Hurricane Sandy that we had six days. And that was a significant weather event, as they say in the weather forecasting news now. That was an event. And before that, it was seven days out in 1984. So we've had a long run of just having four or five days. And so a lot of great suggestions have been made. We know that we've spent a considerable amount of time, almost six years, discussing the school calendar. And this year, we actually unanimously voted to accept two-year calendar with a moratorium, which respects certain holidays that we have in the calendar. And we recognize those. And in response to some of the, the inquiries from the community about we could have it on this half-day and that half-day, actually, there is a Massachusetts regulation that says guidelines for waiving the 180-day requirement, and there are basically none. But what I did find, to answer folks' suggestions about half-days and so forth, the education laws and regulations states, "All days lost to health, weather, or safety emergencies between April 1st and June 1st must be made up to ensure 180, 180 days. But any days actually that are missed between the first day of the school and March 31st must be made up by rescheduling full days only." So it's sort of like a declining balance, if you will, in terms of hours per day that they allow you to reschedule events. And after June 1st, if it snows, which might be the case this year, the way that it's going, you don't have to make them up. But between the first day of school, whatever that day may be, and March 31st, those days missed have to be made up as full days for the duration of the calendar, not half-days. So I, you know, this isn't a vote, it's a conversation because certainly it's out in the communities because it seems like this is such a significant event. Six days out is a significant event, certainly. But our calendar does allow for that. The 185 days, the five days, you know, one could suggest it's an arbitrary number, but it really is purposeful so that schools aren't scheduling right up until June 30th. Not that anyone would if they've been in our schools, but that five days, a window that must be in place just to make sure that no one backs up against that June 30th date, and there is time to make up those days in, in our weather. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from committee members about the snow day update?
So as it stands, June 26?
Yeah, June 25th would be our last day.
25th.
It was almost 26.
Monday, the 25th.
Yeah. The seniors did send me some emails. Ms. Johnson, we think you should consider today.
Right.
In the forecast, it's going to come.
When is graduation?
It is, I think, June 6.
June 6.
June 6.
And, and the state does allow that, that, you know, that's a, that's sort of a fallacy that we have to change the day of graduation. In fact, if it's scheduled and it's within a purposeful window, number of days if we're the last day officially scheduled, if it's 10 days, we're fine. But that was another question that was asked by a lot of folks. So it's, it's good input. It's good conversation to have.
Oh, yeah. Just a quick question. Do, do they allow, like, virtual days? Someone said that their kids were doing a virtual day and they were in a public school in Massachusetts.
So they're called blizzard bags?
[laughing]
And really, the blizzard bags can, are pretty much enacted if you move past that 185 day. The verdict is out on whether it's really an educationally sound suggestion or just a quick way to make up a snow day. And in fact, most districts do have that time built into their calendar to make up the day. There's a lot of conversation, and even amongst educators who would really like to make up that day other than in June, and parents perhaps too. The language is very vague. It's something that we've had conversations with our educators, our administrators, and our, and our parents on some of the advisory teams that we have. But the regulations, when we talk about equity, they're somewhat inequitable. And what they should reflect is not so much day-to-day assignments, but longer-range plans, project plans. But that accountability piece, and the assurance that every course is being addressed equal to the times that they would have experienced in the amount of time and focus in a school day is what we're basically saying. A blizzard bag is in lieu of a full-scale school day of experiences for our students. And so there are a few districts that are embracing that, mostly the ones that are up to nine and 10 snow days at this point. And it's certainly something that we should have a conversation about. But it does, it does present some issues, some educational issues, in terms of what is the quality of the work that's being done. So it is. And it's a regulation with very little language associated with it.
I think that we've always started our schools before Labor Day. Just the schools that, the school districts that are in trouble this year, I know somebody's at like June 29th already, are the schools that start after Labor Day. So we, we've always taken into account that, that five isn't necessarily five, and we can go eight snow days or whatever, and we have the room to go.
Right.
So we're, we're okay. We can go till June 30th. We don't want to, but we can. So.
So any, any other input on the snow day update? Then we'll move to approval of the 2018, 2019 school committee meeting dates, as presented in your packet.
I suggest the change to not the dates, but the very last, unless noted, all combined school committee meetings will be held at 6:30 at Algonquin. Could we please change that to six? Because our last umpteen combined meetings have been six o'clock and might as well, the last, six, the combines. They're always at six o'clock. So.
So Kathleen, would you like to make a motion? Or?
I make a motion. We accept the school committee meeting dates for the 2018, '19 school year for Southborough and the Union. A whipage as changed.
As changed, okay.
I'll second.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jerry. For Northborough?
A motion for Northborough that we accept the school committee meeting dates for 2018 and '19 school year, as noted, as amended.
Amended, thank you.
Seconded.
Second one.
For Northborough.
For Northborough. Region.
So.
Thank you.
Good.
Second.
Paul.
Okay, all in, oh, just, no, the Union doesn't need to vote. So all in favor? All right. It is unanimous. Thank you. Policy development and or distribution? Oh, personnel updates. There's none.
None. This, this is a rare event.
I move to accept it.
Thank you. All right. So now, seven. Policy development and distribution.
So we did have some suggestions from school committee members, and thank you to the two Pauls. Well, to Paul Butka, and Paul Desmond responded. I have none, so that was important too, because you're our masterful editor here with some of our documents. This was a part of the conversation taken up, of course, when we were having our calendar conversation about religious observance and making sure that everybody had what they needed to be able to observe according to their faith without concern necessarily so about make-up policies and so forth that were already in place. So this was an attempt to clarify that and make sure that there was inequitable implementation of the policy.
My question about the, the policy, the policies is not anything in regards to the wording of the policies. I would, if, if and when they become approved and accepted by the school committees, can they be included in the school handbooks?
Yes, absolutely. We don't always include the policies because they're subject to change. This is a, this can be a third read if the committee members would like to continue to review this and approve it in, at our June combined meeting. We'd like to certainly have it approved before the end of the year. So if folks would still like to take additional time to look at it, we can entertain comments, just like we did this time, in either, you know, we were, the intent was to bring it back to the individual policy subcommittee meetings, but with the weather conditions as they were, several of them were- of them were rescheduled. So we can definitely bring this back to combined, and hopefully, vote that by the end of the year.
Okay, I have to start over here. You had?
Well, I had a couple of comments on the policy. Is this the time for that?
Oh, yes.
So under number one.
And which this is, I'm sorry, the first policy?
I'm sorry, the religious observance policy. Under number one, the last line, it mentions five days, I think, should that say five school days? Because under number three, it talks about giving five school days advance notice.
That was my moment for that clarification.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Jerry?
It's just a note, you know, in the last few years, we've been removing, whenever we've noted mass general law on a policy, we've actually taken it out of the policy, because the laws can change. And we put, I see it's in here, and I'm wondering if, to be consistent, we should not have it there, but I can see that maybe you, you know, maybe in this case, maybe this is not a usual case, and you want to have it there, or?
Can we add it as a citation of the law? I think we use it as reference.
Yeah, use it as a reference, I think, but maybe grab, take the body out of the policy.
Oh, you mean that whole paragraph?
Yeah, the whole paragraph, because that law can change, can change, and then all of a sudden, you're stating it wrong.
Yep.
Maybe no one's had a chance to look at it in a while, so.
I think we added reference points on a lot of the policies, we can put it there.
Yeah, we don't typically put the whole, that's true.
The only thing that I was wondering about in this policy with this, under two, in the red, where it says, "Any assignment assigned at least one week in advance of this absence", and it says, "Or due during this absence is due one day after." So I wasn't sure, did we mean "and," or was that intentional? I couldn't remember. But I just, the reason why I said "or do," so say someone, you know, the teacher assigns something, homework is due the next day. So the idea is that the student will have to do, like, homework on the day that they're out. So that's why I thought we were talking about when you have a long-term assignment of at least one week, and it's due, you know, the day that the holiday is, that you would pass it in the next day, where, you know, to kind of distinguish it. Because obviously, if it's due the next day anyways, you do it then, if it's due the day before.
But if it was due during the absence, it would have had to have been assigned previous.
What?
If it was due during the absence.
Right.
It would have had to have been assigned prior to.
Right. Right. So it's a, we're saying, any assignment at least, assigned at least one week in advance of the holiday, or the holy day, or the absence, and due during the absence is due one day.
Oh, you mean "and" instead of "or."
It says "or."
And due during this absence.
Just "and slash or," is that what your suggestion is?
Well, I mean, if, well, I wouldn't say "or," because what if it's a homework assignment, the holiday's on Tuesday, the teacher assigns something on Monday that's due on Tuesday, then, you know, it can't be the student.
Right, the "or," I understand what you're saying, because if it's "or outright," then any assignment.
That's due that day.
Or an assignment due during the absence is due the next day. It's "and."
Yeah.
It meets these two criteria, that's why it's "and." It's two conditions. It's a long-term assignment, and it's due on that day of absence.
Yeah.
I just want to get it right. You want "and," and no "or."
That's, because those two criteria must be true for that to come into play.
I don't know about that.
There's two conditions.
What about an assignment that was signed, say, three days before, but it happens to be due during that holiday?
Then it wouldn't meet that criteria, because it has to be both, this and, if this and this are true, then that, right?
What I'm saying is maybe "or" is correct, because you might have an instance like that, in which case, this would apply.
But then if it's only.
So I think that when we discussed this, we discussed it if, if an assignment was given a week before the holiday, and it was due, like, the holiday that the person was out, that that person had to pass it in the following day, because they were given a week's notice, plenty of notice to do it.
Plenty of time to do it.
And then, I thought that we talked about, when we were discussing this, that if it was assigned when they were out, they had like an extra day or two to get it back. Wasn't that the conversation we had?
That's what the first sentence is.
Yeah, yeah, so that's kind of why.
But if it was assigned on the day before, say, it's assigned on Monday, the holiday's on Tuesday, and so that they should, shouldn't be due the next day they return, because that means they had to do the work on the holiday.
No, it's due one day after.
Well, Kathy just explained it well, but that's not what the sentence clearly states.
So that's what we discussed, when we were having this conversation, we discussed that if the assignment was given a week or three days prior to the religious observance, that it was due the following day. And then if the, there was an assignment given that religious day, then they had like an extra day or two to pass it in. So it didn't have to be due the next day, but then, so let's say it was on Tuesday, they came out of school Wednesday, then the assignment was due on.
Right.
But if it's Thursday.
Isn't that, I thought that that's how we had this conversation.
So can I just throw a monkey wrench into the whole conversation, and just get rid of the "and or's?" Doesn't it suggest that any assignment assigned at least one week in advance of this absence is due one day after his or return?
Right.
And just take out the "and/or" part?
It is, yeah.
Is due.
Yeah, I don't know. What about if the assignment was assigned like three days in advance? What if you just say?
That doesn't clarify what day it was originally due.
How about if you just say, "Any assignment due during this absence is due one day after."
We'll send it back to Paul.
Kathy, the first time Kathy explained it was very clear, and if you notice, the first time she said.
Just because me and Lynn did this together.
The first time you explained it, you said this and this, and then you presented the other aspect, which is a separate idea, that's not convenient.
I just want to say that maybe it, as a policy, as we always say, you're putting too much procedure into policy, maybe we should be more vague, and say that they will have ample time, within reason, or something more generic that will address that. Because what we're trying to do is give the student ample time to observe their holiday, and then have time to have time to do their work. So maybe it should be a little bit more vague, and just.
But if an assignment is given a week prior to the, a week prior.
Just break it into two sentences. We have on tape, we have on tape what Kathy said, right? She said it a minute ago. It was two ideas, and they were both clear, as separate ideas, and right now, they're rolled into one unclear sentence.
We can listen to the tape.
Now, she explained it twice, the first time was the best one.
Right, write the comments.
The first run was the best.
And we all have policy subcommittee meetings, I think, between now and June, which is our last combined. So we could listen to the tape, edit it accordingly, and bring it back to both subcommittees. And I think the purpose of this whole finite language is to have greater clarity for our teachers, just as well as our students. Because I know teachers also struggle with this a little bit, in terms of what's, what is expected. And this is to sort of have some consistency across the board, so that students, teachers, and parents all know what the specific requirements are.
Correct, so all teachers have, every teacher has to comply by the same.
So I'm going to make pop some popcorn, watch the Kathy tape.
First time I speak.
I want to open a vial.
So we're going to move those back to, thank you, everyone, for your input. We're going to move those back to policy, and we'll see them again at a future combined meeting. And we'll move to solar feasibility status, next item on the agenda.
So this one is actually something we do need to move by the end of this year.
We need, which one is this one, day 350?
Right, and to Jerry's point, we can remove the MGL records. This is so specific, because it is a new policy, and because of this MGL recent mandate for the substance use prevention and education policy. So this is something we have to have in place by the end of this year. Oh, those little notes on the bottom, in blue with the little question marks, those are Paul Bucka's questions.
Ah.
So the blue is for Bucka, all the edits that Paul sent us our way. And I did tell him that we would move his questions forward, so that the committee, part of the question, one question that he did have with respect to professional learning, and Cheryl Lepri's awesome, she just put the footnotes right in there, so I could, we could remember. He had some questions about, should we put professional development in there, because there's a cost. This is like every other unfunded mandate, and we will have to train our staff appropriately on the implementation of this policy. And yes, there will be a cost, and yes, somehow, we will minimize that cost to whatever extent we can, by using our resources. But so lies the underlying, underlying reason why there are unfunded mandates at this point. So that is the cost related to it. And then there was a slight edit on the back, in terms of making a reference to athletic and health and wellness departments. There are some corrections, just some sort of grammatical questions. The two footnotes are with respect to, how do we mandate, or do we mandate, and should we mandate, parents attending the first MIA athletic meeting? And I think that's an implementation question, which our new athletic director and high school principal will be addressing, and will be, we can provide an update once that's defined. But this is what we do now, and this is really what the regs suggest. And about the cost for implementation, all of our health and wellness providers have been trained on the Sbert test, which is the screening for brief intervention referral treatment. We've talked about that a lot here at the table, when we've gathered, and our position is that we are not an advocate of the Sbert test. It's done in two, at two grade levels, targets could be seven and nine, it's a very quick test, all of the information is confidential, which means whatever we may find out, it can't be shared. And so we traveled, and Lisa Conrery's waiting in the wings there for the guidance presentation, will remember a very, very, very cold day in December, when we traveled to the State House, and gave testimony to the Chair of the Education, Mrs. Pike, I believe it was. And we argued why we didn't feel that this was even relevant, should not be in the regs. And thankfully, that Carolyn Dykema listened to us. And because of that, there is a waiver in this law. If we can provide that we have a program equal to what they think this Sbert testing is supposed to bring about, which is making connections with our students, we can apply for a waiver. Since we had the language included, thankfully, to Carolyn Dykema, bringing us along to the State House, I've gone online and asked for that waiver form, which they tell me is readily available. And I'm so documented that I've made that request, and there's no form. So I'm going to make it again. When they ask us why we're not implementing the test, it's because we're trying to apply for this waiver. And again, it's our theme, it's all about making connections with kids, and that's where we're going to know if they're at risk, not a five-minute test. So that seems to be the, our philosophy here. We were very successful at having that language embedded. So that means there's no cost to us yet, because we're waiting for that waiver form, so we can file a waiver.
Paul Bucka's comment about the mandated parental attendance, that's a good point. So what happens to the parents of the student athletes who don't attend, I mean, what happens to those athletes if their parent does not attend the mandated program?
I mean, that's, I think that's what we need to figure out here at the district level, and that's the implementation of the regs. And I'm sure we'll have more. That's something we've struggled with before this mandate was in place, wanting our parents to attend informational sessions for athletics.
Sign something when you register them, that they read all this stuff?
Yeah. It's like our 200-slide PowerPoint for mandatory training at the beginning of the year. We sign it at the end. But I think that's something we can bring back, certainly, to the combined committee or the regional committee in the fall.
But we need to have a policy in place, so this needs to be voted on this evening?
If, if, that's the will of the committee.
The boos.
Tracking, close the tracking button.
Well, the blue, the grammatical edits are also, but those seem fine.
I was just talking about the footnote.
Yep.
Except all tracked changes, at this point, if they.
And delete comments.
Yes, absolutely.
So I move to, on behalf of Northborough School Committee, to accept the substance use prevention and education policy, J 350, as so discussed today at this meeting.
Thank you. A second for Northborough? Second, thank you.
I'll move for Southborough.
I don't think it does, it doesn't have policy.
Second.
Thank you, Jerry. Region?
Okay, region? Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
In your packet, Madam Chair, is also the Phase Two, solar feasibility. I wanted everyone to have a copy of this. If it meets with the committee's approval, I would like to send this and get this off. This is the second piece of our, or the committee can sign, members of the committee can sign the document, whatever their, whatever your preference is. We have five sites in our three districts identified for roof mounts. This is based on Ty and Bond's analysis of all of our facilities. We are going to move forward with just the school piece, the town is working on this, whatever they're doing at this point with their solar investigation and feasibility study, but we're ready to roll. And that, what's very exciting is that, when we met with Ty and Bond originally, and we started to talk about what that RFP would look like, on the roof mount selected sites, Algonquin is one, the Z School in Northborough, the Neary School in Southborough, the Lincoln Street School in Northborough, which is new, and the Mary Finn School in Southborough, three of those four schools, five schools are going to be looking at roof repairs within the next five to 10 years, or significant roof repairs. And so part of the conversation that we had on the onset, because we know this has happened in other districts, is can we roll the cost of the roof repair into the solar project, which would yield a lesser return by the energy savings, based on the solar usage. But what it would do is it would repair our roofs, we would not be moving to the town for warrant articles for roof repairs. And that would allow us to sort of leap forward with that. So my discussion with Ty and Bond is, what's the downside of not just seeing if we can get someone to embrace this project? All five schools, very extensive project, if one RFP satisfies all schools, we may get someone who sees this as a significant gain, and would be willing to absorb the cost of the roofs. And the answer was nothing. So my suggestion is, we roll the dice, see what we get back on the RFPs. We may find ourselves saving our town's significant amount of money on roof repairs down the road. If we do not get anyone who bids, we decouple that. And so that's the plan moving forward. With respect to the canopy sites, that still has not yet been determined, and that would come back to either the solar subcommittee for conversations, once the RFPs came forward. There is a difference of opinion in each district, as you can imagine, about the canopy installs. And so we obviously want to work very closely with our towns, but in one or two of the towns, it's softening a little bit, in terms of, well, I guess we can get around the, you know, the poles, they're not that much of a hassle, how much are we going to save? So we're having those kind of conversations. So this is really exciting. We can turn this RFP with Ty and Bond. I'm hoping that we're out for bid for proposals on this by May, June. It really is the amount of time now that Ty and Bond would need to put all of this together. I would assume a lot of it's boilerplate. I was quite impressed with the cost for Phase Two, which was significantly less than we had anticipated, and that's a 40-30-30 split of cost. So this is really exciting. I'm a little nervous about what that's going to mean, if we get the RFPs, there's a whole lot of work going on in our schools. But just as an aside, Southborough, I met accidentally with John Parent, who's also doing the green initiative in the town of Southborough. He is very excited about this, because he felt that if it was moving forward in Southborough, there would be an opportunity to capitalize on the green initiatives, which are already targeted towards our schools, but that, there may be some funding that he could couple with this project. So it's a good timing for us. And in Northborough, Lincoln Street's brand-new, so we don't have a roof issue, which is also very nice. That might be appealing for an RF, for bidder. So I just wanted to share that with you.
So I welcome each committee to make a motion to, for you to accept.
So I welcome each committee to make a motion to, for you to accept, you know, that we authorize our superintendent to accept the scope fee in terms of the proposal from Ty and Bond to the packet this evening.
For Southborough.
Thank you. Okay, Southborough.
I move for Northborough.
Seems very reasonable and well put together. It's good to get it, get it going.
I need a second for, for Northborough. Susan, thank you.
Second for Southborough.
Second from Southborough, a second from region. Questions before we vote? Did you? All right. No more questions or comments? All in favor? Yay, thank you. Distribution only on the next item, that's quick. This is our annual report from the collaborative. Good work by our member, and certainly as a member of this collaborative. And then I, I've included in your packet, just for information, the goals that were discussed actually in September and October, and then the document that you will see when you log into the Google Doc, our quick superintendent's evaluation goal document. And then I'm going to turn this over to, can I just add one more thing? It's very timely, because one of the goals here has to do with the strategic plan. We just received notice that we, we did apply for a grant. It's a new initiative by the Department of Education. It is to help those districts who already have plans in place to take that next phase forward on a current plan. It's not really for districts that didn't have a plan, a current plan, which was our situation several years ago. So we applied for the grant. This just describes what it's all about. Greg is, will be trained. And then we have a whole team that will, we think, be trained as well as part of this grant, and a grant implies no cost. So if we remember last time we went through our strategic planning, we used the services of the consulting branch of MARS, and so there was a cost factor associated that with that. This is just sort of arising a plan that we have, and so there'll be no cost. So the first step is to get someone from administration, Assistant Superintendent Martin, no, I'm sure we'll be involved, it's the ending job. And then we will form our team, much like we did in the last process. But we have a plan, and it's no cost this term. Exciting.
It says training for what? I missed what.
Strategic plan. Our plan will expire in 2020.
So training on strategic planning?
Yep, on strategic planning development. So it's plan planning.
Aim the trainer.
Train the trainer on the plan. And so Greg will be the facilitator of that process, and so it's good stuff coming.
We put our trust in him.
Absolutely. All right, any other items to come for the committee this evening?
Well, so the superintendent's evaluation.
Oh, sorry.
So, not to discuss goals or, or the document or anything like that, but to discuss the process, because we have to meet members. So last year, I think what we, I mean, last year, I think we sort of fine-tuned the document and the process of getting the document to all the members, so that they could easily input the superintendent's evaluation online in Google Docs. And I think we've worked out the technical difficulties, and I think that worked pretty well. Bring a horse to water, you can't make a drink, so actually doing it is up to each individual committee member. But, so we talked about the, the timing of everything, and so I think what we need to discuss shortly, briefly, is how, so Christine, Superintendent Johnson will do her self-evaluation that basically will map the progress that she made against each of the goals that we all approved. And she will also give us the links to all of her, her portfolio and, and all that stuff. That, in the past, has happened at a, an additional combined meeting. So there's two options. She could do it three times at Northborough, Southborough, and Region, May 2nd, 9th, and 16th, which I don't think is a really great use of her time. Or we could schedule another combined meeting, May 16th, before the May Regional School Committee meeting, a short one, for her just to present her, her evaluation, give her an opportunity to open up the, you know, the floor to questions. And then you would have from May 17th to, like, June 6th, to actually do the, do the, your, your individual evaluation. I think that, because, because we would distribute electronically everything that you needed. And then June 6th through June 20th, I think it is, the June 20th is the combined meeting where we actually present Christine with our evaluations and our composite evaluation, and to discuss everything that goes along with that. I think that's enough time. I'm a little concerned it's too much time, but I think that's enough time for you guys to do what you need to do. I would highly recommend that we have a combined, that we add a combined meeting of May 16th, with the caveat, it only works if we get quorums. So if we don't get quorums, then, then at least we have a couple weeks after that that we could try to do it again, or we just let her do it electronically, and you guys can each individually email her questions.
Or I present on June 20th, which doesn't give a lot of time for feedback.
Well, that gives no time, because they're.
Right. That's. Yeah. Unless they wanted to pull it back that day.
Yeah. Exactly.
Yeah.
So I leave it up to the committee. We could, we could actually, since we have such a problem with quorums, we could actually just say, we don't need a, we don't need another combined meeting. She doesn't need to actually present her evaluation, her self-evaluation to us, and leave it open up for questions. We could just do this all electronically. What is, what are the wills of the committees?
The wills? I can't attend on the 16th.
I don't think that can either. We know your will. I don't think I'll be able to either, so I don't know.
We don't have.
Two other members aren't here.
And I won't even be a committee member on May 16th.
Yeah, so we don't know for Northborough. So that is the other thing, and thank you for bringing that up. So May, I know in Southborough it's May 8th, we lose committee members, and May, what's it?
It's the same day.
It's the same day, okay, so, of course it's the same day. So, so May 8th, we're going to lose committee members. The, the practice in the past has been that the committee members that have rolled off obviously have a full year's knowledge, so we invite them to, and we will include their evaluations in our composite evaluation, because they're, you know, they've given a year of their time, and they, they know what's been going on all year. New members, a little tougher, because if we have new members, they will have been here two weeks. So.
What if we do a combination where we do, we do it electronically, and then at each respective meeting that's going to be happening in the beginning of May, just have like a five-minute, you know, if anybody wants to ask questions or.
Well, the.
So she doesn't have to do everything.
The meetings start May 2nd, so that means she has to do her final self-evaluation before May 2nd, which, what we used to do in the past, was we used to have a special combined meeting in April, right, because that would allow the members that were rolling off to attend the meeting. But April, you know, like, a lot of stuff actually happens and gets done in May, in May-June. So we were short-changing the superintendents in the past. We kind of felt like, that was the only problem. Do you know?
Would the self-evaluation be available to people who aren't on the committee? Because if it's done during a meeting, then people can watch and see, you know, what the superintendent.
She will absolutely do that, June 20th.
Oh, okay.
But, but the general public doesn't have input into our evaluation.
Right, but they can see the presentation.
They will, yeah, they will, they will have an opportunity to see the presentation.
Okay.
I think we can get away with electronic.
Yeah.
She usually does a very thorough job on the whole thing.
Okay. Then I am hearing it is the will of the committee not to even bother with another combined meeting on May 16th. Do I see a lot of nodding heads?
Great.
Okay.
I don't hear a motion that we add one.
Done. Okay, that's what we will do.
Fantastic. Now, can we, any further discussion on superintendent's evaluation? During that? Oh, sorry, Lynn.
Just a, just a quick question. So did I hear you right, so that on June 20th, you would do your, what you normally would have done, of like, just summarizing everything that you've done for the community?
Absolutely. And so then, when the, do committee members need to turn in?
June 6th.
Okay.
Will this be summarized in?
Uh, yeah.
Communication about it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The link and whatnot, okay.
Yeah. I mean, you'll have from May 17th to June 6th, so.
Yeah, when the link is live and ready.
Right.
We'll, here, okay.
Okay. Any other business to come before the committee? I will welcome motions to adjourn.
On behalf of Northborough, I move to adjourn.
Thank you. Second. Thank you, Northborough. Southborough?
Out motion.
Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
All right. And the region will stay in session. Thank you all for.
I'm making a motion to the union.
Thank you. Oh, sorry.
Hi, Patty.
Thank you.
All right, so for region, I'd suggest that we take literally a five-minute break. We have to.